That you, everybody pretty much knows in the broker world, because I know some of them pretty well. And I'll call and I say, "Oh, I heard someone's on it." Oh, and they all know. It doesn't take much for them all to know who's in town or who's looking.
A little bit of a network there?
It's actually competition. You know what I mean? Because nobody gets a commission.
But they know.
You know what I mean? But they all know who's in town.
This is just more of an example for us of there's no action needed on this.
No.
Just a good idea, though. Just thought patterns.
Yeah. So we did the agenda backwards. But we can do that.
Yes, we can. All right, so we did that on, that was actually under city administrative report. Okay, so what are we, we're going to do billboards. We haven't had enough of billboards yet. Gosh, no, bring it, right?
I like that.
Ben, Ben? Can you have a mic so I can hear?
So since our last planning commission meeting, I reached out to Glendale, Arizona, which was one of the billboards that we saw and the examples that Elizabeth put together. And I also reached out to TKDA to look for some information, and I reached out to Clear Channel again. And from all of those people, I haven't really got much further than where we were two weeks ago. From Clear Channel, that is the proposal that I put in front of you guys earlier this evening, where all he gave us was a circular sign with sandstone coloring and the font that you would see similar to on the billboard, or on the bridge itself.
So the Donna Orange.
Yeah. And I did ask specifically, could you put on a square cover? And he said he was working on some other things. This was all he could get to me today by about 1:30. So I'm hoping at least when we, if we do have any further discussions, depending on how we do any action on this tonight, he'll have some other examples. Regarding Glendale, Arizona, they weren't able to provide any of the materials that they had for their billboards. I spoke to one of the planners there, and they said that they voted on the appearance, and then the billboards came in, and they just kind of took care of the rest. So that was, and for that, that was new billboards that we were looking at. Those were, they weren't replacements. They did have a clause for replacing or updating billboards, and it was really similar to the Burnsville that we saw. Other clauses were saying, just they go before city council, they go before planning commission, and they act as kind of the nay or yay for the design of the billboard. And it was to bring older billboards into compliance, and that was actually Glendale, Arizona, that also had that. Lastly, when I was meeting or speaking with TKDA, Troy Androli, he's the structural engineer, head of group structural engineering, and he kind of confirmed that we were thinking there are just, we have to consider the footing, we have to consider the site conditions, we also have to consider what material type, if it's going to be heavier brick. And cement's going to be the heaviest, so if we did cement panel, it'd be the heaviest. Brick would be close second. And then last, you could do some kind of steel stud with a stucco design. But what we do see a lot of is the brick and cement. And then the width of the pole cover itself could affect the wind load, not just the weight on the actual footings. What all this means is if we were trying to find an option that would allow billboard companies not to spend a ridiculous amount of money on fixing things up, we still might not get a cohesive look throughout the whole corridor, just because of current site conditions. So that kind of boils down, at least what I thought coming into this meeting, we have about three options. One is keep the billboards the same as they are today by also including some kind of maintenance clause saying that they need to maintain the, maintain the paint. Maybe that would also be adding a Columbus sign. That would probably be the least restrictive. Middle-of-the-road restrictive would just say what we kind of have in the ordinance, which is in your packet on page five, I believe. Number A, support columns shall be concealed by materials that are primarily natural stone, brick, approved masonry, or stucco panels, approved by the planning commission in conjunction with the interim use permit review. So that kind of gives you the authority to decide whether or not you like it. And maybe that means the first one that comes across the counter, we look at it, we decide this is kind of the template we'd like to see, and that's the one that we can kind of cookie cutter through. Or the most restrictive would default back to our original plan of just brick. And option two and three most likely would remove some billboards just based on cost alone. But if that's kind of what it takes to make the I-35 corridor a little nicer looking in our opinion, or in planning commission, city council opinion, then that's what it takes. So I guess for me, that was the three options that I saw that we could come up with, or the action items we could decide on recommending to city council, unless you guys had come up with anything else.
Last time we had a meeting, we talked, you were going to talk about legal and some of these things too. Did anything come? I thought we were, we were. The wording on this, did we have something incorrect on that? Wasn't there like a discussion that we just couldn't do these things without, or change the ordinance without checking with legal to make sure that we weren't causing these companies money, to spend money to, you know, no, am I okay? I think one time we were talking with legal because of the CUP that it was the Hoyer people that have IUPs, but they were literally changing.
I don't think we'd spoke to legal about that specifically. There was one particular billboard that had a little bit of a fuzzy CUP to an IUP scenario that we spoke with them about, but that was a month or two ago. That wasn't.
And we resolved, we resolved that language.
Yeah. And so that was resolved. Pretty much the only changes that were made in this, this is the third amendment to the original billboard ordinance, and there will be four, because we still need to add dates, but that'll probably come in with the planning or city council. But the only changes they made are in the blue here. And that does include the language saying that the design shall be approved by planning commission in conjunction. That was the option two. And then other updated billboards, concealment with uniform shape, and then also having the sign be a certain size oval, certain color, and then a certain distance below the actual billboard itself.
So Pam, I think you're referring to prior to, the previous discussion going to the council, there were some, there were some outstanding legal issues that went to the council. They resolved.
No.
And the only outstanding issue was this, this column cover. And the council said they were going to give the billboard company one option to come up with, meaning different scenarios.
But that was the only.
That was the only issue that we had, we had resolved all the rest, and they turned to repair the language. Okay, that's, thank you.
What do we think?
I mean, ultimately, the goal has been to.
Put some new rules in place so that we can wean some down.
Clean it up.
Yeah.
I like this word.
I like number two.
Yeah.
I, I still feel we should make them dress them up. If that means we get rid of a few, I, I'm for that. Do you think when you can include the word City of Columbus or just Columbus?
And that was, that was my misunderstanding of the last meeting. I put that in there.
That's just where it says City of Columbus, I think the last time we talked about just saying Columbus.
Oh, yeah, yeah, City of Columbus, okay.
I don't know where I got that. Yeah.
Probably because the letters are just smaller.
Yeah. No, Elizabeth had thought the same thing, and when she was reviewing this, she's like, "How, how did that get in there?" I'm like, "I think that was me."
What do you think, Barb?
Well, I think it's covered everything that we talked about. I don't know that we have the necessary wording about the cost, because we do want to get rid of some of the billboard. So if that helps legal to do that, you know, if they decide they don't want to spend $20,000 per each billboard, maybe they'll cut it down.
So you're kind of leaning towards option two then?
Okay. Shall we? I think option two is the most, I think where we're imitating the role of the signs, where I think the owners of the signs can adapt to that. And I had a question to city council, but I think they would be okay with that. I think the wording is good, but it's bad. And have we received anything from those vendors that had them up?
It was the.
The little diaphragm.
That would be that.
This is the only.
That would have been in the one, or it was the square on the circle.
That's it.
So all the ones that we heard from, that's all we got back? So that's kind of the end of that.
We were primarily working with Clear Channel after this, because they were the only ones that responded.
I don't believe.
Yeah, Hoyt responded with, just with pretty much language of how we could maybe put a monument sign up there.
City could do things, but he was going to check structurally too, remember? And we never heard anything back from him.
No, he never reached out.
I'm in agreeance too with the second option. I think in the way the wording is, it gives us, you know, like, and I like what you said about, you know, first one to the counter, and we start to see the precedent. I agree.
The only other thing then, I think, that came up at the last meeting was where to locate the sign, if that's something you wanted to actually put in here, if that would be the better left to wait and see how the first design comes in. For some of these, it looks like, you know, you'd assume, I did look at the corridor for Glendale, Arizona, and they all are similar, and I'm sure that was a design consideration made by Lamar. I don't think that they, I've read through their ordinance, they didn't have anything specific, so I'm sure that's something you could address when the first one came across the counter, not necessarily now. But I know that there was some questioning, if you wanted to be more specific at the last meeting.
So if we wait till the first one comes across the counter and sets a precedent that we like, then do we need verbiage in here? How, we couldn't really do that. We gotta be like this one. You know what I mean?
Well, I think, yeah, we have something in there under the discretion of the staff or administrative company, so that if you get into that, we may accept that precedent and then build that.
You know, I think that's.
You have examples.
If we say we like this, we like that, do you have something similar?
Yeah, well, you know what I mean, I think.
At the last meeting, when we looked at some of these, we said, you know.
That looks good, that looks good.
No, we really don't want it to.
No, we don't want no candy stripe or stickers.
I still like the.
I know you do. I know you do.
You are a little strange.
But even where the city sign would be, and if they come in with a design, if they can kind of see, right, design, you can kind of put it in perspective on how it really looks, instead of saying, oh, we wanted it one-third down.
And once we have the first one, we can say, this is what we like, you know, this is what's spinning well and.
Yeah. All right.
We have a list of, I mean, aren't you going to get like 10 from Clear Channel?
Yeah, most likely.
Are they likely going to set the stage?
I'm sure they will.
Yes.
Don't they have the majority of them?
Yeah.
And there's our common two first.
It's not all at one, it's not all at one time, but there's, there's chunks of them, because that's how they initially came in. There was, you know, like a batch of them, and then there was a few months, and then there's another batch of them, and.
But it's, but it's. Clear Channel that has the first batch coming. I believe so, yeah. I think you're right.
And that's why, one, I've been working with Matt, he said that this is the first thing that he's come up with, kind of hinting that he might have others, and I asked him to continue working on that to let me know, or send them to me, because I have a feeling we'd be continuing discussions of any updates.
Well, if that's the best.
I think if it goes through, it'll be a little bit more serious.
We're going to have to come up with a design. We might have to. And where do you need dates in that?
Just on the.
Section A on the page four?
We need an effective date.
Date on page six. On page six, it says, it's looking at the, this was actually one of the verbiage that we used to kind of get around, to make sure that we could not legally tread on any of the other billboards, and that was, they, after this date, any billboard that is erected with an IUP, a new IUP, would have to be subject to the shared land use. So if there's another primary land use, any billboard after that date would have to be removed.
So is that, is generally that effective date, that effective date of the old year?
That's a date that you select. It's going to be a forward date, if you're trying to eliminate utilizing the one, I mean, that already has two.
So we would say something like January 2020?
Twenty-five, whatever you pick. I mean, that's what that does. So if they have a renewal from 2021, you might put it, put it after that, put that there, put on 10-year notice that the next thing there is, that's part of it. You had one presently, is that right?
Yes.
And they'd have to go, if there was no effective date here, they would go right there. So I'm guessing you would look at that effective. And if the renewal is February 2020, you might put March 2020. That's what I took all of that to mean. You're letting them come in for one more renewal?
Yes.
And they have 10 years on that renewal.
Yeah.
So then there's the relatively, you know, there's what you're.
Anything after 10 years should this situation happen?
Right.
You'll go, you'll go with the.
We'll find the right date.
You'll find, yeah.
I don't know what the date will.
You guys will find the date of when you're.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that it was, it was one year on because there was no, no damage. And then they could still.
Like 2025 or something?
It's, it's pretty far off.
What is the effective date on page four? First paragraph.
I think this is.
That was the one on the setbacks.
Yeah.
Five feet or, or 20 feet versus five feet.
It's for any new billboard, or new, not reapplying IUPs, but.
That is for new ones. So, so newly built ones, so right?
That's.
Is this just making. Well, not the ones that are existing, it would be newly built ones, because they recognize that the easements are already established with the current billboards. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to.
For an IUP.
Because it's, it's newly constructed.
So this has nothing to do with any of them that would come back?
No.
Could you not make any of them?
Only, only, only if.
You know, only if, like, say they want to do a dynamic, they would have to take down. You know what I mean? And then if, and then if they decide to put a dynamic one.
That's what they talked about.
They talked about having one more dynamic sign.
No room for no more.
Dynamic sign unless you take some down.
So that, and does that become a new sign essentially then? And then they would fall under this criteria?
If it's a pour a new foundation or drill a new foundation, I would assume that's more like they're erecting a completely new sign.
So can't you say something setbacks for completely new signs or something, something that defines it as a.
So if this applies to any, room for two more, I haven't been permitted for one, one on city property.
The, the dynamic ones?
Well, not dynamic, this is.
This is for all.
This is for all signs.
Yeah, but we're, but we're, right now, we're meant to.
Oh, you are, all right.
There isn't any more. On a dynamic sign, you're going to have to take down a static sign in order to do that. And that's what, and that's what Clear Channel talks about. Yeah, we would like one, one more sign. So I'm like, okay, well, then you have to take some down.
Right, right.
So, so that would be, you know, that, that would be the instance where you would have a new sign.
Of them being by. If they're damaged, they got a free trial, and then they need the new setback. If it's a new one, because they bought out others, they need the new setback. I don't know why you need an effective date.
Because they would be, would be constructed. Um, let's be that they're on their own 20. Oh, yeah, that's what I mean. Talking to you because.
Just new signs, get rid of effective date.
New construction, that newly constructed sign. That's really what we said.
It would be a brand-new sign, and then they would have to negotiate a bigger easement.
Why wouldn't any sign? How long?
Regardless, is what you think.
Would that get in the way, do you think, of doing the renewal of the IUP if we have them updating their, if someone does actually want to go through an update there, they would?
Okay, 20 years ago, they all said, you know, they, we got to. Tell me that's what you want, if that's what you're hearing to, you're going to need some out somewhere.
And that's what they really want is to.
I'm not part of that.
I know, but that's what we want.
No, no, I mean, I don't like them either, but I don't, I, I'm not, I don't know that any.
If they had decided to do that dynamic, remove, and they move that, they have to then abide by it. But I can see the point of, they're coming in for an IUP, and the sign is there, they're going to have to move them all?
In 10 years?
I mean, right, but I mean, if we don't put an effective date, that would mean they'd be non-conforming or.
If Schuber noticed that they can renew one time, basically, that's what you're saying, so are you.
But it's really, that's what we're saying?
Mm-hmm. Yep, because in 10 years, they're going to have to comply, or they won't have a sign anymore.
Well, the business is always going to be there, so basically, you're giving them 10 years when you're doing it.
Or they can comply.
But the business already exists today, so.
There's a business on the.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we got to take the business out.
A big campaign to get rid of the business.
So, so let me, so let me take Devin, Devin here, so, so right here, we have half acres only, right? So does it really mean that if they really don't want to take the billboard down, they ask Orman?
Then you have a half acre.
Yeah, if they ask Orman and say, can I buy a half acre? And he says, yeah, we'll buy it for a billboard?
Sure. I mean, that's, that's part of shooting yourself in the foot.
Is that what it will be?
You, you can also change your spacing, make them all non-conforming by saying, they've all got to be, you know, 3,000 feet instead of 10,000 feet.
But, but what I get, what I'm getting at is then Schuber really wouldn't be out of business, Schuber would have to buy a half acre. And we do, he's just like.
If, if those circumstances exist, yes, and they're principal use, and you're, you're putting a billboard on a principal use property and that's, you had a big enough parcel, split it anyway, preventing some future development because you require that use.
Now, that was the one that was the legal question.
So, and the question comes back, is it still a legal question? Originally, it was. We weren't able to afford some of what we were talking about with the IUP on, because now he's got an IUP on that one. Because it was more or less originally a CUP, not conforming to that. But I thought that was the legal one, that they said. With a single use. Does that stop after 10 years then?
No, it won't. And so I don't, I don't know if it will come up again. That's the only gray area, because there's some case law on that one, because they converted, you know, you mean a CUP to an IUP, because it got damaged in the storm, and shortly thereafter, the laws changed, because of case law. So that's the only one that's in the gray area.
You can't advertise other uses that are additional, you can't intro them, that was the whole point. You get rid of them when the terms are.
Right, but, and, and this is the one that was, we had to look at differently because of, the one that came in with the lawyer and saying, yeah, I, I don't fall into this. Right, and, and I'm not saying that's, that we had down that path still, I think that was the one we had to draw.
Yep, that's the one.
Would that still be a problem in 10 years?
And I don't, I don't, I'm not sure if it will or not, you know, who knows, it might be out of the billboard business by then, but that was the only one that had circumstances, all of the other ones that were different.
So would that be said, we need new verbiage here then?
So the way this is set up, if it's similar to the Schuber, it was intended, and I haven't participated in enough of the discussion to give you the direction, but it's the same method of protecting the language, you're going to give them one more IUP, and then after that, it changes. That would be the purpose of that. If that's your intent, then you just say, let's pick 2030 or 2032, whichever was the last one in the cycle to get an IUP, pick that date, if that's not it, that you feel that someone's made an investment, they've recovered their cost over the 30-year timeframe original permit was done, that's not unreasonable. They'll want a new business in your community in 2024, is that, that's the difference in how you. And that's just a policy.
Just what do we want? Do we want to meet it out?
That's kind of what the directive has been to. Council as well? No. Well, no, they're the ones who kind of were concerned about the cost, the billboard companies. Come back with some different options, which they did not do, and we decided.
We're not getting this cooperation, so we're going to move forward with what we already have.
With the setback, do we want that to be?
That is, that is.
After.
Whatever, but it's...
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's kind of the same issue. That's the reason we want the brick facade, is maybe some of them won't put that expense. So if you give them ten more years, they're aware now that in ten years, they're gonna have to move it. These are the only two options we have. Originally, we wanted to actually just get rid of some of them.
Yes, no, and I, I agree with that. One thing, and I don't know how the council will feel, we're asking them now to spend the money to... Put a new face around it. And then in ten years, they're gonna have to move that whole thing twenty feet. And, and I get it, Donna. I said upfront, I'm ready to get rid of all the billboards, so I'd be fine with it. But I think that's a little unrealistic.
Right.
That part of it. So the ones that are there, if they're gonna spend the money to put a new facade around it and that, I, I think it's reasonable to say those would stay. And that we go back to, and, and I believe our original intent was any new signs had to meet the twenty-foot. That the existing ones, even in ten years, we did not ever discuss having those moved. So I'm for getting rid of signs, that clear from day one, so I'm not trying to be for the companies.
Well, that's what we're doing, trying to decide now, if we should try to get rid of more of them. Because you don't want...
Then I think we should have said upfront, no more signs in Columbus. But if we do that, will they all be non-compliant then? If we do that, wouldn't it make most of them non-comply, in, in not complying?
Well, I, I don't thi, I don't think so, we have... Dean, you didn't just say that if we said any newly constructed ones, any newly constructed ones would be twenty feet, but the other one would, would just be legal non-conforming, or legal, legal conforming because they were legally established?
Yeah, I was just raising the point that you need to distinguish and not picking which do...
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're good.
Okay, okay. I mean, as long as you guys, I, I just...
Again, I would like them all gone. Right, but, so then, what was just newly... So we're gonna change the language here to read...
So here's a, here, let me just throw another.
Oh, of course.
If, if again, y, y, your patience is worn out, and you want to see something now, I don't think the setback's gonna do it. So putting some form of dressing up the columns or the supports, I, I would not then say, ten years, you gotta move them.
Right, right, right.
I don't buy that, but if your thought was, create the ultimate death blow, and do all of that in ten years, then let them renew for ten years without dressing up or changing setback. But ten years from now, they gotta do both. And I'll tell you what, you're gonna lose half of them.
Now or in ten years?
In ten years. So you, you say, what do you want ultimately, and wait for it? Or no, let's, let's postpone the setback and get them to dress them up. And get your name on the poll, and that's immediate for anybody that wants them now. You'll lose a few, I'm, I'm guessing. Because I, I don't think the revenue's there like it was fifteen years ago. I really don't.
I'm all for losing a few.
I, I wanna lose.
It sounds to me that it, it is then, any new structures constructed after the effective date of the ordinance is what you would put in. And then you would leave the requirement for brick or whichever you prefer. Were you eliminating, uh, you were only picking between A and B here on this, uh, the alternatives for the...
No, the three of them. Could you repeat that, Dean? So you said, any new structures?
Um, in the very, uh, on top of page four, section seven B three ten.
Right.
It would be, except as modified by this section, off-premises sign structures constructed after the effective date of this ordinance must be setback twenty feet. So that's just any new sign.
So we'd say, any new construction.
I don't know that you need to insert that, but that, if you, you can. It's just...
It's just effective.
Any new sign, structure constructed after the effective date of the ordinance.
After, was it?
And the other effective date, then, you would research and find out a couple of months after Schubert's expires. If they haven't renewed at that time, then they're done. Otherwise, you'd be giving them another ten years.
So that's just A, that's just all...
So, okay, so A, B, C, and D, that's, that's all, okay.
Yes.
And I was gonna say, as I look at the pictures, now I'll give you my... Yeah, no, I, I get that. The, you know, to, to me, somebody that came in and had, whether it's stucco with the side brick and, and then mostly brick with a, a, a stone insert, I, I think they're all attractive compared to what I see on those Blaine monuments. They're all just rectangle, they're, they're really plain. The commitment to work with somebody like Matt and say, we're not trying to run you out of business, that had, you know, more stucco columns, whatever they find would be, you know, the longer lasting but less expensive. They don't have to be unattractive, and they don't have to look bulky, which is what I like about that one bank first. My question is, if you take the northeast, the Gables, and then the southwest one, they're opposite color schemes, but they're complementary. Is that a better word than uniform?
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
Yes.
If they're still coming into the planning commission, then you have the ability to say, that really doesn't complement what we have. Okay.
Expert on that now.
I think complementary gives you a lot more leeway. It doesn't deny someone coming in and saying, well, you know, we kind of like this, that was my grandmother's bedroom, whatever. And we'd like to have this. And it gives you an option to say that, yeah, that's complementary. But uniform is pretty strict to me. Okay.
Oh, that's a good word.
Yeah, yep.
And that's a term we use in the design standards too. So that will be uniform.
Take away, you can get it, right? Okay, so what do we need on this then? Do we, anything else we need to tie in? Motion on this? Anybody want to entertain a motion on that then? Is it seven?
Seven B dash three ten?
Seven... Number that we're bending, but I don't think we have a...
Should we do the seven B three ten?
I would make a motion.
Alright.
I would make the motion that we, the planning commission would send the ordinance number twenty... Just sold out, when I copy it, I can hear ya.
Sure, sorry. We, the planning commission, would send forward to the city council the ordinance number nineteen seven B three ten. With the additions of... Any new construction. With the effective date of this ordinance in section A of setbacks. And in, on page five, in the blue written, changing uniform to complementary, taking out the word city of. And on page six, to insert the designated date of effectiveness of that. After it's been, yep, the Schubert date from staff. And I would recommend this for approval to the city council after legal has clarified whatever they would like to clarify on this.
Anybody want a second, Doc?
Second, Doc.
I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we'll move that forward to the city council. Now, where are we, number, we went out of order here, right? Number eleven? Number eleven, continued discussion on the northeast quadrant, density mixed use district draft ordinance review pages eleven through...
Talking to me?
Alright.
So, the last time we met, Elizabeth says, what is all this bullshit?
Is that right, all there is?
No, listen, I, I had, I had to, I had to tell her to, you know, help me to be able to see the...
Good job, Elizabeth.
Trees for the forest. And it never dawned on me that this was a lot more complicated than you were hoping to see. The good news is, I spent a lot of time on this, and we still have to do it all. And so simply taking out the medium density, mixed use, and whatever the world you want to do over there on Lake Drive with the low density, we don't have to deal with now. There was some cross-referencing where, you know, I, I have, I highlighted it. It's, it says on page two of this document, or the second page, I don't know what your numbering is. Okay, uh, you know, it, it makes reference to the performance standards in section X. Well, they don't exist in this abbreviated version because we gutted out seven A, seven five three. So we don't need to talk about it now. If you have a question on that, you go back to the deluxe version, and then you can find what that was. When we started this process, or when you started and I came into this process, the big challenge was where to put it in the ordinance, and we conveniently can fit this within seven fifty through seven fifty-nine, which was the old suburban residential. So all of those standards are gone, and there will be no zoning district anymore called that. And it, it was essential to take things that exist regarding our senior citizen detached housing. We have a subdivision. We can't cause that to become all non-conforming now and throw it out the window. So those standards stay, and they will be in the high-density district because that's what was labeled in the comprehensive plan. So that one high-density area south of the racetrack where those detached townhomes are currently located are part of this high-density, and then the other location is northeast quadrant. So with that, then, we need to assign the permitted uses, conditional uses, interim uses. And then we get into these performance standards, which you were, that's when I walked in the door. How, how do we get some conclusion on, on these standards? And there's one section on the third page that talks about building exteriors. I have those again if we have assisted living units, which we also are allowing in the high-density area, even though we don't know if we'll get one, or if it'll be back on the west side of the freeway. And then there's a separate section that governs the commercial properties here. So of the things we started with, you had a new apartment building, and well, how are we gonna design it or control it or regulate it and so forth? But in the midst of what the comprehensive plan describes as this mixed-use district, we've got a variety of things, and that includes all those senior citizen housing options. It also includes commercial uses. So those all become a component of whatever ordinance you adopt. But if you said, gee, all we wanted to talk about were some design standards for the apartment building, well, then you go to the second page and look at residential districts. And under apartments, condominiums, cooperatives, we begin. And that's talking about the specific standards related to this. And by the comprehensive plan, we talk about thirty units per acre. We have always had a five-story maximum. That was a comfort level with your fire department, even though I understand we could go six. That becomes a different type of construction, so then they convert from wood frame to steel. And nobody's gonna do that in this market. I shouldn't say nobody, but it's very unlikely. So if you had one, you'd just come back and modify this and say, six stories, or whatever the case may be. But we've got to have a starting point. We previously did not have any specific standards because we did not have this high-density residential in our ordinance. And so I had some old files where we were looking up things for the senior citizen units. And they're very different if you are talking about assisted living. There, there are half of these numbers, and you typically don't have two-bedroom. I mean, it's an efficiency unit, or it's a one-bedroom. And so I think these numbers are high, and we have gotten room sizes from the specific apartment project that for efficiency, and I'll break this out differently. At the time I started this, I didn't have it, but we're under five hundred square feet for their studio. Studio with a den might be just over five hundred feet. The one-bedroom's gonna be, you know, higher than that number. Two-bedroom starts much higher than seven twenty, I think we're well over. My point would be, we want to create a range that's gonna be realistic for the market. You got a proposal in here, and I would change those numbers to be consistent with that. be consistent with that. Our front yard setback standard throughout the commercial area has been thirty feet. I don't see any reason to change that. The side yard has been twenty feet. In our first proposal on the apartment project, we had a a side yard or a backyard, however, we would categorize it at twelve feet. Potentially created issues that I wanted the fire department to resolve rather than us picking a standard because any and all of these standards, and I don't care how many communities you look at, they're arbitrary. It's, it's whatever your comfort level is. Since we have these and we've used them and we have in other businesses that already meet these, I don't see any reason to change it. And it doesn't mean that our standard was good to begin with, but they're all arbitrary. I will tell people, you never want to go lower than ten feet and I see this in some setbacks. Particularly for parking areas where you don't end up with snow storage. We're in a cruel climate and you have to accommodate that. But our typical standards for buildings, that's not an issue. It's where we currently allow one third encroachment of that setback for parking purposes. So if you have a thirty foot front yard setback, your parking can be twenty feet. If you have a snow mound from plowing next to the street, that's not an issue. If you have a twenty foot side yard and you allow one third encroachment, you get fourteen feet left. That's enough for snow storage. But when people want to go down to five feet and, and our proposal had that on one of these, you don't have snow storage. So then our, in our conditional use permit, we say, you're going to haul the snow off the site. Well, they're not going to do that either. So they have these standards. I've asked them to tell me where they have problems and parking will be one of those. So we have provisions already in our ordinance that we've used and have established in terms of existing conditions with private drivers. We have private streets. Oh, no, those stayed public, didn't they? Yeah, they, they converted. Most of the commercial projects that have shared driveways, our ordinance currently accommodates them. It's twenty-four feet. If we have any public utilities in those, we require a drainage and utility easement over all of that. But on private areas, we're not worried about having additional right of way. And so this creates more use of property if they choose to have a private street instead of a public street. But you got to have standards and I'm, I'm just saying not to eliminate debate or have you raise questions. We've been using this twenty-four feet standard and it seems to be working well. Parking. So you've heard me talk about parking. Our standard has been ten by twenty with twenty-four feet aisles. Your current project right now has twenty-four feet aisles. They have all nine by twenty feet underground and they have nine by eighteen feet above ground. And as we've talked certain circumstances and we don't always have parking spaces that have sidewalks. But these do on all sides. And I'll forgive that. But we can forgive that two feet as a part of the planned unit development instead of adopting a standard that says it's now nine by eighteen because then they'll want eight by seventeen. I'm just not going to go there. And when you read in the paper that seventy percent of the cars in Minnesota are SUVs and pickups, we know the problems with tiny parking stalls. So I'm not, I'm not willing to compromise, but this is your ordinance. If you want to change it, go ahead. All right. You want to clarify about that? So right now, the proposal you've got is acceptable in, in, in my opinion. If there has been excessive parking that's been required in planning or zoning ordinances, it's in, it's in commercial projects. I don't care which regional mall you may have gone to, you now have restaurants out in those parking lots because they were never full. But residential parking standards have never changed unless you have a bus stop. Ain't got no bus. We ain't got no train. I'm not going to compromise on these standards. And I want to see two spaces per unit. If they can meet them underground and we're reasonably convinced that they'll be used, that their rent prices for them are not going to deter people, then they're going to have to add more on the surface. This particular project, they've gotten closer and they have room for more. They, well, they can't do much for the main parking lot, but now instead of proof of parking, they've added an entire parking row up along Hornsby. So again, as a part of a planned unit development process, there's give and take and it's routinely dimensional standards. So you say, yeah, we think that's reasonable. You can get a two foot overhang even on a little Prius and you certainly get two feet with a pickup truck. We'll go with your eighteen foot stalls or whatever. Nine feet? If any of you are in the insurance business, you know, you'll hate it because you're dinging cars constantly with nine foot stalls. One alternative to that is to require double painting. You don't see too many examples of that. Many of the grocery stores do it. Firely's next to me does it. And they're nine and a half feet. They're not nine, but it makes people park better. So that's an alternative. Right now, we're saying ten by twenty. You can go nine, but I would add as a compromise, if they want that, what's your give to us? I'd say double striping and it, it reduces dings in cars. They can, they can They can, they can request exceptions. And that is a part of the PUD. You want trade offs. You know, what do we get? All right, in that case, double striping, we'll take care of it. If they don't want to do that, then do ten by twenty. To, to me. And they'll give you a list of fifty communities that have nine by eighteen or nine by nineteen or, and I don't know if, if you've tried to park your pickup in a parking garage in downtown Minneapolis, but it's, it's an effort. That's a seven point turn to get into a stall. And then you wonder if your car's not going to have a bumper missing when you come out because they stick out into the aisle because they also shrink up. This, we're not talking about that here. They're, they're trying to compromise on the surface lot. The garage parking meets our requirements and it has to because you don't have any place for the bumper to go. You can't drive over a sidewalk. I, I hate to pound this in, but I, I just don't give in on it. And they gave us some examples of other communities that had one and a half stalls per unit and whatever. And two of them were senior citizen projects. It's like, no comparison. So now that I've stuck my foot in my mouth, Barb, what, from your, from your management perspective, how many spaces do you have in?
The apartments we had.
On the street? And that's what we're trying to emphasize. So you might've been in that one point nine category.
Yeah, and that was thirty years. You know, forty years, yeah. Ours are larger now.
And more plentiful.
Right.
And I've, I've, we've asked them to define how many spaces are in their, you know, units. Are they going to restrict people? So if you have an efficiency, you say you got one car, period. Do they issue tags to people so you know?
And they put it in the lease.
That, that you can only have one car or if you got two bedroom.
You have to find another place.
And, you know, they talked about, well, what about shared parking? Well, that's fine, but there's no business or convenient church or something else that's next door right now. And we own the property. So we're not going to go into a long-term deal that denies our use. But if you conveniently have those uses that are conducive to shared parking, I think that's great. It's just, that's not an option. And you'll hear these people talk about it. Trying to explain my logic to you as we go. I mentioned at the last meeting that my standard on guest parking at one quarter stall per unit was high and it was. That's a standard that comes out of like twin homes and these detached townhomes so that if somebody doesn't have garage parking directly in front of a unit, which many of the rental projects do not, then you got to have guest parking and you want that dispersed around the parking lot. So that's another standard in addition to two stalls per unit that they need to accommodate on the site. But one, one per four is way over the limit on, on this type of use. I'd say it's like one per ten. But that's only going to exacerbate the problem. And if they're coming in now with additional units, so instead of a hundred and twelve, it's a different number, you know, that'd be another ten, eleven parking spaces that they're trying to get away without having. And it's just complementing or complicating this review process from my perspective. The standard about parking occupying one third, we've had that in here all along. So you have a twenty foot setback, you can encroach seven feet. You get a thirty foot setback, you can encroach ten. And that works. It doesn't eliminate the snow storage options where you get the parking. The, the, the issue becomes if part of the concessions they're asking for are moving parking closer to the property line, then you have to raise the snow storage. And the alternative is haul it away. Can't push it on the neighbor's property. Individual utility metering. Now we want both public and private having separate meters. We're, we sell water and if we can't if we can't put it on somebody's taxes, there's got to be another method. And in one of the discussions we had with the ownership group, they are collecting in addition to their rent structure, X amount for sewer water and trash. That's fine. Because then we can shut down the apartment if they don't pay the bill. But they will have individual metering unless they come in and say, no, we're going to pay the electric bill too. But nobody pays for cable and they say they're providing cable. So they're going to have all individual meters and services in every unit. So it's up to all of them to pay their own utility bills. And that's common, but you need to say it because we had a project where it was built, the building inspector didn't know that we should have been worried about this. And all of a sudden we had an eight unit building and they were all off of one water service, one gas service, one. And we made them re, we made them redo it. Then it wasn't in Columbus. So now we get into what you really wanted to hear and this is a combination really of everything that we've talked about. And, and I, I know when I first walked in the door, you, you had numbers like primarily brick or category one, which was and we're, we're not, we haven't been enforcing that. We haven't been doing it in the community. And you had a project in front of you that was, if you're talking about a brick or masonry component, it was not even twenty-five percent. And so what I tried to emphasize was focusing on the things that you like in different projects. Was it really the masonry component? Was it the architecture? Was it variety of materials, variety of colors? And this does end up having certain percentages similar to what my original kind of global view of this to just get consensus from all of you, what is it that makes a difference? And so the very first one, it just talks about all facades twenty-five percent. Well, this project won't meet that. I mean, it, it doesn't at the present time. We'll see what happens with any resumetal. Panel and lap siding. Used to complement masonry materials shall be roughly proportionate. So we know off the off the bat, you got, if, if, if your numbers are twenty-five percent masonry, you got twenty percent typically in residential projects, that's glass and trim. So now you've got the balance in some other siding. It's going to be panels and it's going to be lap. And this says the percentage should be roughly proportionate. I don't want to split hairs and say it's got to be thirty-one percent this or that. But it's roughly proportionate. So if they had thirty percent masonry or twenty percent, then whatever the total panel and lap siding is going to be will be the balance of the building. And we're saying it should be roughly proportionate. So if they come in and they got ten percent lap siding and sixty percent panels, it, it's not meeting this standard. And the question becomes, as a planned unit development, when you're reviewing this and someone says, well, we've got twenty percent panels and forty percent lap siding. And that, that might've even been close to what they were proposing. Would you bend those roughly proportionate standards to meet that based upon what you're seeing in the total project? And it's the balance of all of these things that I think ultimately allow you to say, that's way too much lap siding. We want more panel. And the cost isn't substantially different. So your starting point again is twenty-five percent masonry, twenty percent glass and trim and the balance is going to end up being panels.
That's, I mean, the whole point of masonry is it's the, it's the fancy part.
It's a focal point. And, you know, again, you can pick a standard that you want and if we're, if we're going to continue to struggle to meet it, why are we establishing the standard? I'm, I'm, I'm
Just to let you know. The application of this came at the same time that we were trying to develop, Brian, you worked and through before. So we're being tied by time trying to figure out what is the focus of the law? What is their expectation of what they would utilize and use? And they're looking at us for directions.
Sure.
And we don't have a direction. So
But they're also leading the direction because they don't want to put the cost out there for a higher percentage.
Right, but when he came stepping in, he came into our fundamental start of we were just going from a, just a just a real rough what we were starting with. So because we hadn't done that before, we, you know, all, so you giving us some of these factors changes that a little bit and helps us to try to scope that and, and try to figure out.
I'm trying to end up not with what we want, but what you get and make it the best that you get. So also occurring in the last six months, whatever the timeframe is, I mean, Hy-Vee came in and that was primarily brick and they ended up with less than fifty percent brick. So we've got a standard that didn't get met. We just approved
But we didn't have a standard at the time. That's the problem. You're saying we didn't have a standard.
No, that, that, that is the community retail standard. That's the zoning district they were permitted under. They weren't permitted under high density. They were permitted under the community retail. That's primarily brick. And, and that's, that's the question you always say, what, what, what do we get?
So then that's not a real fair assessment then because they were under the, under that other zoning. So we have to kind of
So I think, I think that's the community standard. The community retail zone, the brick now is primarily brick. There is no other standard for primarily brick.
And then you have the control room that says that you have a masonry building and there's a wall there with a sink. And then the light industrial that says that you can have
masonry facing the right of way, but you can have other materials on the other side. And I think what's going to be Real tough for the planning community to talk about, when you're redoing your ordinance, if you change the standards, what do you do with the existing building? How do you mesh the existing buildings and those zoning desert? Because you had it. Then it goes. That's one thing. I possibly do a hundred percent.
do 100% where that would be way over, above and beyond doing that. And so now we're doing something that's so incredibly left that we're like, okay, 100% brick, 20% brick, you know, by the way, 20% is over here. And so it's such, I think it's...
Started.
Thought about that, I feel like it's almost, you know, it's like a balance. We were, we were saying, in city state, we can afford to do that kind of building, now we have to do something else. Or, you know, we feel like the city will have to contribute to the needs of the community that can't, we can't accommodate.
I mean, it's, I think it can...
I think there's a tough road to go down. And then on the other side, now... Now you're gonna help them in, and they're showing you all...
All different things.
Two block panels, this is in a, in a, like...
Well, that's the primarily brick area, you know, but it appears to me that the primarily brick area, a brick area, is no longer, can you look at the friends always saying, they're not brick, they're stone, and they're aluminum, and they're a mix. So it's really hard right now, all of us, to accommodate, like... What is it that we wanna see? Because what we hold, we're proving today, we're giving a little bit more latitude because there's other products, other things in the cost is a big factor. I know Dean is aware that building materials have gone up double digits every year for the last three years. Leon's told me, Dean's told me about building materials, so how far do we go? What's the new standard where we can go, that you have three levels that will, that will make...
And what do we do with the hotel? I mean, that kinda just got all set in place, and that was more under the PUD, right? To be able to do...
That's, that's its own zoning district, so...
Yeah, that's the horse racing.
That's, that's in the horse racing district, it has a different standard. I think that, that doesn't set the trend for everything else that's going on. I'm trying to be conscious with what's happening in the marketplace in general, what's happening when you are at the end of the region, you're not in the middle of it where a lot more money is spent on things in communities quite frankly get away with more design standards. I was always jealous of my wife, she was planning director in Minnetoka, and that was their standard, brick. And now that she's left, the, the new Best Buy store has burnished block, and she goes, how could they let that in? Now, it's all masonry, but it isn't brick. This is a problem if we constantly are modifying our requirements. And, you know, Elizabeth says, we have a brick building, and that's the gas station. And nobody would notice it. I mean, it's painted, you don't, you drive by, you wouldn't say, well, that's a brick building. And it gets obliterated by all the things that are associated with convenience stores. It's got pop machines, and it's got ice machines, and it's got wood for sale. You don't see any of that, but that was built 30 years ago, or 40, long time ago.
And also, how many apartment buildings are we gonna build in the city? I mean, you can set your standards by quantity too. You can set it by quality, and you can set it by quantity. You think you're gonna, if you think you're gonna have 10 apartment buildings, okay, then you might go with a lesser amount of brick or a lesser this. You're only gonna have two apartment buildings in your whole city. You might want them to be really quality set standards for two apartment buildings. I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as...
And, and your standards might be too high for the projects to work. I mean, that is a cold reality. You don't always get what you want.
Thank you.
I'm an old janitor fan. I'll bet you shook yourself a few times. No, this, this is, this is the most difficult role for me. It would be very easy to give you an ordinance that said 75% front facade and 50 this, and you just walk away, and you give it to somebody, and they'll go, it's not gonna work. And so the type of commercial buildings that you see now are multi-material, they're using vinyl again, but they call it something different. It's not, it's, you know, and I saw the standards that came out of Minneapolis, and on my way to my daughter's last week, I drove past an apartment building, it's right off of Marshall and Broadway, right where the Schmidt Brewery is. And there's a couple of very nice-looking apartment buildings that had a nice blend of brick, but not all brick. And then the third one going up, right next to the street, no setback, there's no brick on it. So I saw those standards that you had copied, and I'm like, what are they doing? How did they let that go? Was that an affordable housing product, project? And, and that's a trade-off that they give for them? I don't know. But for us, we can't continually back off of something that we set as a standard because it doesn't help those that wanna make investment. It's not fair. And here, you can, you can look at the plans of the building you had, accept the criticism that, yeah, the masonry's all on the garage for good cause, and that's why you don't see it as much as if it were an upright column. But masonry gets more expensive the higher you go off the ground, you gotta carry all that weight. There's an association with that. So this tries to come up with other things. You can't have a single floor of one color. You gotta have a minimum number of floors.
Do you have panels that look like, or panels that look like...
Yeah, you know, there's all kinds of faux stone that come in panels. They look like stone panels.
I, I know that, but my point, my point is, if it's too heavy, I mean, if it's too heavy to, you're not gonna do a steel building, you're gonna do a wood building.
And that, that is a big difference. If you're doing steel building, you can, I mean, you look at all the stone in downtown, it's because it's all steel construction. And most, most of the residential units being built in the cities now are five-story and less, because of that code threshold. And when you drive through anywhere and look at them, you, you try to come to the conclusion, what is it that makes this appealing to me? And I think it is the staggered building lines, cornices on the top or a staggered roof line, a variety of things, including colors, other than those dreadful apartments. You know, they got a yellow floor, and then a pink floor, and then a blue floor. And if, if somehow you reach a conclusion that this is an attractive building, which I thought their final iterations looked pretty decent, what was it that did it? Well, did we know without asking them if there was a disproportionate amount of lap siding versus panels? They told us that was less than 25% brick, they told us it was about 20% trim and other. The components themselves, it's pretty easy, there's four or five components in what you're, what you're viewing. They can put any color on any of those. Is it, is it having upright sections of a building that are, the units that are staggered out, whether it's the two bedrooms that stick out, or the one bedrooms, or, you know, do you want that one column, one color? And that's in part how they've broken up the building. They're using the staggered lines of the building to be their color combinations. Again, when you drive around the community and look at these other units, there are some pretty dreadful-looking things, and I put this in the higher category without knowing even what the materials were.
I know the one thing you talk about too, it's like a white band and an orange band, very bright, it's usually associated with three buildings in one project.
Yeah.
But then, can't the brown panels look like stone?
I don't know. Question you have to ask the architects.
But, but, you get where I'm going, you know, I mean, all the, like, is on the bottom, and we know that's true.
Yep.
But otherwise, it's all lap siding. The panels are lap siding.
Yep.
And I like, I mean, the color, I think, we said about everybody, could, could you do a little...
Yeah, I can see...
And, and what I mentioned, I think I brought some photographs of a very high buck project near Ridgefield, and I could not tell you from street level what their white panels were, whether they were painted concrete, whether they were aggregate, smooth aggregate panels, or whether they were some other composite. I had no idea.
So Dean, I know you talked to about, what do you, uh, warranty and all that, and I think one of our studies is, is that it's, that it's, I think, I get, they need to understand the rest, and how do you put a seat in the shop, that, is there a, is there a, I think you need to come to the line, is that we're, is that we're...
I talked to the, the city attorney yesterday and said, did you forget I needed some weasel words on warranties? And, and, and he said, state statutes govern certain things, and the extent to which the city can get mixed up in this might be a real fine line. So we're gonna have to rely on that judgment. I've been concerned about what can happen. We had some meetings earlier today, and I drove around and went by gander, outside of noticing how many trailers they had.
Oh, yeah, that's another break.
Break in the rules.
They've, they've, they've repainted their concrete building. This is an ongoing maintenance issue. You get 10 years out of paint, that's a good deal. The warranties on the, on the pre-manufactured LP or Hardy products are 15 years. After that, it's what I was also saying at the last meeting, people get into design code enforcement, and it's, it's an ordinance as big as your zoning section that details what you have to do for upkeep, and then you need one or two inspectors to go out and do that.
Yeah, we're not going, we're not gonna do it.
You're not, you're not going to do that. And so to the extent that our conditional use permit makes reference to, you know, maintaining the property in like-new condition, things of that nature, what teeth do we have? Can you successfully take them to court? Maybe not. But part of that is also what pride is in the community. You got a ramshackle area, they all look the same. You got a nice area, they all look the same. I mean, it's...
You know, what should prevent, like, the building that they're building, being born, have they...
Probably a lawsuit.
They probably...
Well, you know, the contractor's saying, we, we build it according to your spec, and they'll say, no, you didn't.
And in the meantime, the building is built like that.
Yeah.
And the city has to look at it.
And that's what the city lives with, and that's, we're not saying brick is...
Paint on the bridges.
Your bridge?
Yeah. The bridge out here.
I better take that provision out of here then, I know.
You know, if, if, that's our main concern.
Sure.
And I'm not saying, I understand the cost, it's not that we're all full on brick, but what we want is...
Durability.
Durability, and we want it to look good for a long time, and, and that, we don't want, we're the one who's, and then fighting with the owner to fix it.
Yep.
You know, they get caught in a lawsuit, they're gonna wait their time, and we're not caught about that.
No, no, it's, it's hard to get caught in the middle. But, I mean, cities do get dragged into those things, but there's nothing that you can really do.
And then it's not that we're pushing brick, 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 we're pushing quality, durability.
I understand.
And you do get that with masonry, and the expenses that are, you know, like, I can't get caught in that, because how do we get what we want, and protect ourselves for that?
And, and I've, I've been trying to get you to understand why that has an appeal and doesn't meet certain standards that you previously thought had to be included. Is it a combination of factors? And, and, and it is. You don't have a floor that's the same color, you have upright tones, it's just that they're not the brick, you know, they're not the brick ones.
No, I guess the design, it's a color, and, you know, I definitely agree with how I see things, and you want different, different materials, and that.
But we want durability.
And, and I don't know how to get you there. I, I think if we took that standard from 25 to 50%, you, you would, you know, maybe have some inquiries, and people may just say, your, your market isn't here yet.
35?
Well, it could, I mean, what, pick 35 instead of 25, or any, any number you want. I'm just saying, if you have a project, and now it appears to be struggling, I, I think, you know, you have to make the decision. Does this project, is it, is it premature? We don't want any if they can't meet our standards? Or are our standards too difficult for them to meet? And right now, I don't think anybody thinks these are unreasonable standards by any means. And these people are saying they're having trouble making ends meet. That is, in part, the first thing I heard them say at the first meeting I was at, and that is that this, this, we don't command Minneapolis rents here. They don't. And so you got a budget, so you can hire somebody, you know, your, your financial advisors, and get into a confidentiality agreement with the developer, pour through those numbers, and you may end up doing that. And, and simply saying, they're right, this can't work, we're not, they're not trying to pad their pocket with gross income here, they can't make it work under these standards. Well, what are the things that don't make it work? Well, there are certain fixed costs, no matter what anybody does. The things that aren't fixed end up being the onsite amenities, things within the building, and they don't have an extraordinary number of them. They have a few things, but they're not extraordinary. The rest of it becomes really, what's the quality of the inside of the unit? We haven't even talked about that. That makes a difference on what rent structure can go. If any of us are looking at what we would, you know, think about living in or went with our children, and, you know, you, you, you see a $200 washer dryer combo, you're gonna say, boy, I don't think this is the right place. So they've got a lot of money that's hidden and we never see. Part of that here is going with underground parking, and by the way, we made that a requirement for high density. So we're just saying that has to be included, but we don't have that as a standard in the medium-density district. We're not talking about it now, but at some point you do need to talk about that. How do you deal with parking in those medium-density facilities? You gotta have enough parking, and it's gonna be all surface parking. Are you gonna require detached garages? They look pretty dreadful in some places. It takes an extraordinary design to get those done. There's just a lot of factors. But back to these specifics, they're, they're not, they're not tiny.
Even the two bedrooms, they're too bad.
Yep.
It's actually nice.
I can actually read it.
What's your feeling on all this, Elizabeth? I mean, you've been in the meetings, and you know what we've been struggling with.
I understand both sides, I understand the building's real size to it, because I've talked with Leon, and I, I understand that it is more expensive to build things today than it was in the past, so I, I understand that.
I also understand...
I wouldn't be able to build the buildings. I also understand they wouldn't be able to build the buildings, um, as our current goals. You mean, we told them that the 100%. Right. They would've been gone a long time ago. So I get that too. Um. Yeah. As you said. Yeah. We're gonna have one permit. So just from what I heard, what the study says, you know, I mean. There's a market study that I think the number that they're proposing is what the market study says. But I don't, I don't think we're gonna have multiple. I think we're gonna have one. And the product that they're, that they're showing, um, you know, I mean, I've looked at the, I've looked at the footprints and it's not a bad product. So now we have to figure out, okay, what are, you know, what are the gives and takes? Will we give us this? Will we do that? Do we, do we want up standard? What are we willing, what are we willing to do, meaning what are we willing to do? Because, and I just learned this today, um, the apartment building does not pay fiscal period. So. And that's the particular case of housing. So, you know, we don't have 40% off, you know, um, and so the apartment building claims that they pay 350,000, you know, to your taxes. Um, I don't know how much of that comes to the apartment because this project is a pretty big, you know, big number for it. So. It's a PUD, it's a PUD, it's a bounty. That's why I looked at it and I said, okay, we have to look at the building and the way that it's being, you know, the look that we want, so it is, because they have to inform a complimentary.
Complimentary.
To.
That is complimentary.
What we, what we want along the, um, I don't want to, um, um, driving home 54, I looked at the, the boards.
They do, yes, they do. Some of them are rusting and.
And rusting, you know, there's, there is a maintenance problem there. But it's more, that wouldn't be helpful if they want to live there.
In that whole area.
That's the problem.
So with that being said, how about this tough question? With you sitting in all these meetings and all the meetings that we've had, is this a good fit for us? I know it's a tough question, but I mean, really, that's where we're at. Is this a good fit? And can we make it work? Do we wanna make it work? You know?
And this is the policy question you had on day one. You know, when you come back, you're not, and, okay. This idea of.
This is the first discussion of apartments.
I mean, apartments were not allowed in our zoning code. It was only with this complex that we moved it in. The question is, someone asked me, did they build an apartment zone? I think so, uh, zoning, you know, complex, they're wrong. That question has been, couple of last five years, I've, I've had people call me for it. Oh, it was never allowed. So now that we've allowed it, now we do it. This one happens to be the one that's, that's what they're talking about. They're all saying the same thing.
I'm sure financially, they're all in that same building. The one that they built down from Menards, the executive one, it's not an attractive. Well, and I'll even take that a step further. I have feedback from a client of mine who's living in there and saying that quality. Not there. Not there. You know?
I mean, even the outside, it looks like vinyl and it's just all one color.
She doesn't even wanna cook because she's afraid of the exhaust system in it. And it's brand new, they're the first people living in the units. So it's like, again, we go back to the PUD, you know, give and take, but I mean, are we, are we, where we need, can we get to where we need to be? I don't, I, I feel like we just keep going in these circles and I, you know, one minute we kinda start to direct and then, you know, is this the right fit for us? I mean, nobody wants to scrap an idea like this is great tax base, good money, but do we know that?
And I think this goes back to, you know, when you visited the apartment building, what I heard was, well, the outside, you know, I mean, there are problems, but when, when you went inside, they were like, oh, you know, we've decorated well, it just did quality materials. So this is what I think's happening. I think they're spending more money on interior than they are on the exterior. It's, it's, it's more that.
Yes, no, I get that.
I would, if you got a super duper washer and a Mickey Dink washer, I would go in the super duper washer. I mean, I'd go with the amenities that are there.
Right.
You know, I would, you know, I mean, I might want stainless steel, I'd be willing to do that.
You're gonna walk by the outside and kinda go in and say, I heck with it.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, this is 20% brick.
Right, right, right. Yes. No, I get that.
I'm not gonna care. So I know why they wanna spend more money in the building, in the amenities, than on the building, because they put more on the building.
Less in the building.
Less in the building.
And have they come across with the points, the rent points yet, the, how much they're gonna be charging? Cause I know we've asked before and they haven't, they won't say what they would.
I've seen the numbers.
Okay.
I think they're high. And they claim that they are at the high end of their opposing, uh, study that was done, which is fine. Um, and that will ultimately be a component of what we review.
Well, doesn't that give us a little more leverage if they're on the high end of, you know, the, I understand the building materials, but you're gonna be, it's the high end apartments, so you're.
I, I think, I think where you have to tie, tie in the numbers is where is it going? Is it 25% developer fee, 20, 20% consulting fees? Or is it going into what, what they had recently said, that they're looking at an upgraded flooring material, not linoleum, but tile and whatever the laminate flooring is, you know, an upgrade. Uh, so it'll have a nicer appearance. But all of these things, we don't regulate any of that for commercial buildings. We don't, we don't do it for single family homes. Um, when you talk about air exchangers, that's a code issue. We can't touch that. But I wanna go back to your design standards and if you picked a number like 35% brick, is, is it gonna really add to the durability or does it give you a feeling that there's a more quality product? I'm, I'm, I'm just asking the question. Cause when you pick any kind of percentage, whether it's a setback from a street, they're all arbitrary.
Right.
We're all dealing with arbitrary. Part of my starting point was looking at something that was maybe a 75% brick to a proposal that wasn't even 25% brick. And then looking at the standard, which was the first approved project in this development, which is supposed to be able to pay for these things, and it was less than 50% brick. And, and so from my perspective, if the market is telling you one thing and you develop standards that are counter to that, it might be the answer to Pam's question, that are we ready for this? Well, your comprehensive plan says 30 units an acre. I have to develop an ordinance that allows 30 units an acre. But if you don't want this product, we'll put 100% brick or use our old term primarily brick, and you won't get one. I mean, I can guarantee that. And so if we're trying to work within today's marketplace, we've gotta have numbers that are realistic. But you want something that has more appeal like this than other things you've seen out the street. There are some dreadful apartments out here.
There are. New ones.
Brand new.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I don't go in that many, so I don't know how they are. There are, you know, there's, there's, there's certainly a better quality in the markets that have everything higher. I mean, it's like rent for commercial property out here is much lower than it is in the inner ring suburbs. That's just the function of how the economy works and we have to, we have to think about that. We have to be realistic. So you are picking the standards. I'm just giving you my rationale and again, trying to help you come to the conclusion, why would something like that be acceptable? And if it is, what are the components of that that make it do it? And certainly the architectural features add dramatically. There are a lot of shoebox buildings that look like bare home, uh, that are apartments. And there's nothing appealing about them. And they're single color.
Can we say something like, um, like, like, the block is important, the, the, the bricks, the, the, all the, that's, 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 that's what we're, 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 we're.
Well, there's a little smattering here and there, you know, like the front entry in a couple of spots. If you got a five story building and only one floor is brick, there's your 20% right there. It's a function of what happens on the lower level, particularly when you're meeting code requirements for garages, that's all masonry. They're gonna have a poured ceiling in there. And if you want more than the first floor, then that would be a separate component. And yes, that could fall into whatever percentage you wanted. I, I.
I'm just saying, if you were, I mean, like you're saying, you're 25% on all. And we put something in there that's, it's a base of all of the, the, and then it's all, it's all, it's all. Masonry product would have to be elsewhere in the building, on the building. Just keeping that, more might give us some.
Yeah, this is kinda confusing. I don't understand the trajectory way. That's what home Chris said. He said they would use some additional for it around the.
But they have it, I mean, yeah, all those spots, that's all brick in the front.
And then they wouldn't.
Use it on the side. They would use it where you walk in and see it. And actually, it is important to have a quality exterior because I don't care how good the inside is. If people drive up there and it looks like hell, they're gonna drive.
Right out of the parking lot.
If it isn't kept up, it's a quality exterior.
You're not gonna go there. You're gonna drive up and say, oh.
Yeah, it looks dreadful.
Yeah. And so, and I know that happens, you know?
They can have stainless steel appliances inside. Of course, it's not gonna do any good.
Yeah. Cause it used to be.
Yeah, it was, it was more angular.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Downplay the exterior. And that's important. So maybe if they can't do the quality exterior, maybe something can help. Because this building is going to be there and people are going to rent there. So then what's gonna happen is you're going to be doing appliance hell. And then what do you have?
It's gotta be attractive inside and out and.
It does. And, and the quality comes not just with brick. I mean, it comes with materials. There are quality materials. It's just, how do we make sure we get quality material?
Somebody goes to this website, they're not gonna be influenced on what the percentage is.
They're not. I get that.
They're, they're, they're gonna say, well, that looks nice. And then they're gonna start looking at rent and floor plans. I mean, that's really what's gonna happen.
But 10 years from now, somebody drives up to it and if it's looking like it's kinda all falling apart, then they're gonna say, well, I really don't wanna live here. And that's what we don't want. That's what we're, that's where we're struggling and, you know, Dean, this isn't my expertise. So I, I get what you're saying with the price, the materials and all that. We just, again, in 10 years, how do we guarantee that? I know there's no guarantee. We want what we have today with what we're looking at in 10 years and in 20 years, we want it to look like that. That's, that's kinda what we're looking in. How do we do that within our, with, with, within the CUP, within the PUD, within our ordinances to make sure that we have a way to actually enforce it?
Well, and not only that, if these people are hemming and hawing about how much they could spend on this building, are these really the builders we want?
Well, and I think some of the problems, like the, the dirt that you were talking about and some of the areas that they're running into, any developer that comes in to do this, would they run into the same problem? I, I'm assuming they would. So if they're gonna have to spend an additional $300,000 to bring dirt in, it doesn't matter if it's this company or anybody else, they're all gonna have the same problems.
Oh, absolutely.
That's one of the bad soles.
Yes, yes.
The, the hotel had bad soil.
Right, right. You know, and then you look at when Home Depot built in Forest Lake, I mean, they had nothing but problems, if you remember with rebuilding things. So I think that part, they're all gonna face the same problems there and, and the additional cost. But like you said, how do we protect us and the city? Not us, but the city that we actually can make sure we get the maintenance and, and we get the problems fixed if there's warranty issues and that. That's the tough part.
Yeah. You know, whether it's a tip up panel, which I don't remember, I think those are 15, 20 year paint warranties. The, the Hardy product, the LP product, they're all 15 year if they're factory painted and you don't paint it yourself. Otherwise, I mean, every commercial business, every home needs.
They need maintenance.
Perpetual maintenance.
Yes, definitely.
How do I make you keep your house up? Right now, we don't.
You don't.
And whether your concern is that this is a big building, like the racetrack, and it's very visible cause it's near the freeway, or it's our first project, the issue about warranties and maintenance are the same on everything that we approve.
And, and this is also going into an area that's just starting to develop and, and we're kinda setting a look and feel up there and, and that's, so it, it's not just this one, it's the whole as it grows. You know, I, I mean, and I was looking through Hugo stuff and then you look at what Hugo was 20 years ago and it was a farm town. And, and now you drive through there and you see a lot of nice buildings in that and from the road, they look like they're holding up well and everything. That's what we want as we grow this area. Because this is our only area that really is gonna be developed in this type of fashion.
Do you know the history of the company that is proposing to build it? So I don't know anything about that. Because the one we did look at had already been turned over within two years. It was a different name. That's usually what happens when you build a building, change the name. If you don't want.
So why did that happen?
Why? That's what I would like to know. What is the history of the people that wanna build this? Are they just building it so they're gonna keep it only till they, you know, make some money on it and then sell it to the next person? That's gonna have entirely different philosophy of people to be living in? That's the question. I'm.
Well, my bank flipped my mortgage six months after I took it out. It's a, it, it, I could give you two answers. One, they needed to bail out and they sold it for, you know, a loss. Or all of their contingencies were not used, they didn't have problems, everything went well, the weather was perfect, and it was a golden opportunity to make a lot of money. I mean, those are the two reasons. And some people simply go out, they go through the agony of permitting at the local level, they go through the bank financing, they get it up and they put it up for sale. I mean, that's their business. Who's this individual? I've not, I've not met him.
I'm sorry. I only had one, but I don't, I don't think.
They've got several projects and I'm only hearing from Bill Griffith. He had nothing bad to say about them. And that's usually a good sign. They have a contractor, Amcon, which is a well-respected contractor in the business that does a lot of work like this. Yeah, I don't know.
So we don't know the history of what they built and how long they held on to this property?
I don't. Nope.
For example, my boss, Akleberg and Associates, they've been, they're still, their family is still building properties. He was an architect, a broker, a builder, and he managed them all. And he kept them all. He was an architect, a broker, a builder, and he managed them all and he kept them all for decades. He owned them out in the Highlands.
Those are the type of business people you want to deal with because they're there for the long haul.
But if this person, the company, just builds a thing, you make a profit and then they don't care who they sell it to.
Yeah, I can't regulate that in here.
And we can debate, you know, we don't have enough information.
And we can debate all of that, but the, the, really kind of going back to this is, you know, I understand what you're saying about the integrity of these companies and things, but that's not going to, you know, we, we got to move forward on what we're going to do here. So how do we do that? I mean, you know, every time we kind of start to hone in on what we want to do, we get a little bit more of a curb thrown our way, so. I don't, I just don't even know where to go anymore.
You know, and I'll be the first to admit, this is right.
It's, I just really don't even know where to go anymore.
We are relying on, on you and the city and. Parents with dealing with this. We might be heading in a way that isn't realistic, I don't know.
Right there.
Yeah, I, I mean, we don't know because, you know, we do, we know our jobs that we do in the world and.
And we know a lot more about this than we ever did know, but.
Like billboards and that, I mean, we're learning, but it's not our expertise, so.
This changes constantly for people in the planning business too. I mean, we're constantly modifying ordinances up or down based on what you see happening in the economy. It's, it's a soft, it's a softer market than it was in spite of seeing apartments going up all over the place because none were built for 10 years, nothing. There were no townhomes literally built for 10 years.
All they've been doing is building senior housing.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess maybe what I'm thinking here is, do we kind of just kind of come to a consensus on this and then it leaves us enough room to wiggle in the PUDs then, wouldn't it?
Well, it, it can. In other words, somebody comes in and they got 10% brick and they've got no architectural features. You, you know, you're going to conclude relatively quickly that you're not even close.
Right.
If you elevate the one standard here for the masonry component, it isn't going to affect any of the other language. I've tried to write it such that if that number changed, so, you know, I say lap siding and panel siding proportionate. We know again, windows generally fall in on 18 to 22% of the wall area of apartment buildings.
Well, and that's what we kind of felt is this is very, it's flexible in here.
This is flexible.
Yep.
And so if, if your notion of flexibility is you don't want to end up with 20% because you started at, you know, I'm, I'm saying it backwards. If you want to end up with an absolute bare bones minimum of 25%, then you ought to go to 35%. But it's going to be hard to get the balance. What are the public benefits that you receive if from day one we knew they were only going to afford 25% in the first place? Where, where does that, how do they compensate us because we're bending our rules?
We'd let, leave that to them. Like Jody said, how many apartments are we going to have in the city? We're going to probably have one, maybe, yeah, top, assuming, looking at locations, maybe two, but I don't see much more than that. Let them tell us, you know, or.
But then we're also many in other areas, like say the parking and different things like that. We're already making some, some there that.
That's why I'm saying if your, if your number, if you're already giving in things like you're modifying the parking, I mean, there's a whole variety of areas where they may be coming and looking at some certain change. And you know that 25% is the number, then I wouldn't artificially elevate that just because we can reduce it because I want to see something in return. And right now, I don't know what I'm getting in return for modifying the parking standard. This property doesn't have a lot of room for things like public amenities. They have a private amenity right in front and then they have amenities within the building, but those aren't public amenities. Typically, we want more landscaping, we want more open space. They've got room to put trails and sidewalks and things of that magnitude, but that's the trade-off. So you say you didn't meet the standard, what do we get?
Maybe they're just, maybe it's too many units.
They'll keep wanting more.
Right.
They've already looked at going up and found out that they can't afford to go up.
Well, that's, they need to give a little here.
That's all part of the game.
Right.
And we don't know, you know, I'm not smart enough to know where you call somebody on the carpet and just say, fine, just walk.
Well, neither am I and I'm not smart enough to say, well, 35%. I mean, that.
It's arbitrary.
Right.
It is.
And to answer Jody's earlier question, if, if it turns out that the 25% is all on the one floor and you wanted 35%, you know, how do we describe that? Well, I would just say, you're going to know that probably 20% is on the bottom anyway. And so they're going to do it in columns and they're doing that in the main approaches, there's stairwells, things of that magnitude. Whenever you have staggered buildings offsets, that's the place where you change a material type. And so you may see two floors of brick going up, matching, that's for them to design. I, I wouldn't care, but I'm, I'm concerned that right now, again, you got a plan that isn't meeting your 25%. Do we want to go over that or not?
So in looking at the materials, in looking at IV, what's the difference between cladding and panel?
Cladding is typically a trim, it could be cladding around the.
Because looking here, it's a.
Yeah.
All of this, and here it says. So all this material is probably metal.
It's, it's.
It's clad.
It's a metal.
So again, is there, is there some other, you know, materials that are maybe look better, compatible with other buildings? Right now, you've got, all you have is LP. On that building, all there is is LP panel, LP siding and whatever the bottom.
Minor amount of cladding on windows and ceiling trim, door trim, things of that magnitude. Those are the primary materials. And here you have different panels, you've got the brown panels in front, which.
Well, they have many, lots, cladding, metal trim. This is a, this is like a whole laundry, what are the different materials that they're using? Which I think would attract it, which is why people, which is why we're always saying, well, this is 50% okay because it's all real interior.
It's, they've basically got three things, windows, brick and panels. So it's not a big list. You can call it ananized aluminum, this and that, or such and such cladding, they're panels. That's, that's basically what they have. These, that, that gray area there, those are panels. You've got brick you can see there, the tan areas.
Two is correct. This is all, this is all board, this number two is all board, all the circles are board.
And the rest is panels.
And the rest.
Yeah. And, and so the combination in, in this case was a little more glass on some walls, no glass.
Well, if it isn't.
There's no glass on, on the drive-through wall to speak of. So it's, it's panels and brick and in this case they. Burnished block. Which is, depending on the size of the block, it's.
Here it's like, so, other, other panels.
We.
I guess that was my point. Can we, can we get a better, make it three?
Material.
Materials that.
We.
Doesn't sound like.
It sounds like they're already concerned about the cost, you know, and they, and they are.
So we have the laundry list of the, the type of materials.
Well, the reason why I'm asking though, Dean, is because Jesse and I had a deal with Huntwood with Tom Carlisle and we went up to 174th where it was a brand new development. All the houses. And literally every house. What that was like, yeah, I mean, it's like, oh, that's all the different LP products they have. LP panel, LP panel. Some were sculpted, some was long, some were little, some were wide, some were, I mean, it seemed to me that they were all different panels that you could choose from, look at the building and I'm like, same panel.
Because they make shakes and different looking things, of all that's different.
And so, again, I'm saying, the different look to it, so it's so expensive.
Sure.
Exterried plan or the panels or sculpted panels or.
All, all of those are in here, in our laundry list. To the extent that we cause them to do different design, what you're saying. We would like, Hardy makes four-foot by nine-foot sheets of concrete-looking stucco. Absolutely like stucco. I had it on my old house. Then you put wood panels up to cover the, looks just like a nice gingerbread house from Minneapolis from the street. You couldn't tell it wasn't stucco. There's all kinds of product out there and what it's come down to. And this is a reflection of what I'm hearing you all concerned about. The two most reliable products in construction now are LP and Hardy. I mean, there's a variety of brands of those, but that has, that is what has evolved over the last 50 years of construction. And where cities require brick or stone, you know, they'll, they'll pull a Wayne's Coat on the front and we've got in some of our metal, or, yeah, mostly metal buildings, the, the most performing material, external material in both construction or residential, which is mostly the composite wood or composite masonry, it's commercial that uses more metal, that's not used that much in residential. Do you want to add a component that, to mix it up? You have so many metal panels?
I, I don't know, all, all of these, I think that, looking at compatibility, this is in the commercial district. It means either you're looking at, if we're going to, and you're looking at. Durability and I. As you're looking at durability, maintenance. And if we're thinking that LP is a maintenance and durability product? Yeah, I mean, I don't know what else, what else to do it. And the only other way to mix it up is to, 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 and what else, what else can you think of, are there a word? Maybe there's a word. Can you say, if you think about the, this percentage of, of great, this percentage of.
I don't know, do you want to get into that level? I mean, that.
Well, that's what she's asking, she's asking, can we do that? Can we, can we?
I, I suppose you could. You're saying you want 10% flat panel, 10% grooved wood-looking panel and 10% stucco? I mean, is that what you're asking? Can we do that? I don't know that you want to get into that level of.
Well, it's more now with dealing with them, is there a way to approach them? And Elizabeth asked the question, can they do, what, what can they do to mix it up a little instead of having just the straight panels?
Because I think, I think at this point, if we're all. All agree. That the, if you're very, if we're going to say, okay, 25% work is, you do the call-ups and we all. All realize that. Is the product, unless it's printed, and then you have an issue with things. If we can't have place Mary because of the call-ups. And then try to do something else. Because we all know. Well, the reason why we put, put things on the button, it's not because of the button, it's because of the. Up, I mean, it's not why we put it up. I mean, that's why you put those accents on it. If you don't have more accents on it, it's not going to work up here.
So what can you do? Ask them, yeah.
What can you, just what can you just ask that question, really? We're trying to save money and it's not about, you know, durability because you can't have the most durable product.
Well, then tell us what you can do to still look fancy.
But I'm saying, do they have a panel of the.
No. I mean, to answer your question, no.
Maybe, maybe it's a ballpark.
But you can, you can, you can get, whether it's Hardy or LP, you can get cedar shake-looking. You can get, again, textured wood, you can get flat wood, you can get flat panels, you can get textured panels. And maybe what you're all asking now is if somebody comes in and they want to change the parking standard or they don't want to put so much brick on, that's when you get to that point and say, then we don't want the balance being lap siding. We, you've got to mix it up, come back, show us something else. I mean, that's part of your option because you're not getting the real zeal that you started with.
And we're still saying, we're still going to a lower level than what we had prior. But I mean, there's still some of them there.
Yeah, and if that's not written in stone, somebody who's not been a part of this process isn't going to listen to that. That's why I was saying if you, if your bottom line was absolutely 25 and you said, so we'll make the standard 35 so that we can at least end up with 25, then my problem is what are we getting in return for that? So if your starting point is as reasonable as it gets and they still tweak it, then maybe it, it comes to Elizabeth's question, does it all have to be two-by-four panels and six-inch lap siding? Can't you mix that up? And yes, it isn't, the cost is not substantially different between the different product lines that they have. But we're not, we're not architects. I wouldn't want to sit here and say, I want the second floor cedar shake and I want.
And I don't want to go with a percentage because I don't know what it would end up looking like.
So then you say, I don't like the fact that you've got 40% lap siding. I, I, you've got to mix this up and throw it back to them. That's part of the PUD process, in my book. You're asking for something better. And it's just like asking for architectural features. And if somebody comes in with a shoebox and there's nothing architectural about it and they don't meet these other standards, they don't come close.
Because they changed too. They used to have the building drop down, they took away some of the.
That's, that's where the extra units came on the end caps.
So, I mean, and that was a nice feature.
Yeah, we went from 96.
Right, but I mean, if you remember, they had the staggered. And that looked nice.
They have the drop-down.
Yes, we liked that.
There was, there was, yeah, now they're, if you look, all you're.
Yeah, which. So they're looking to get more money out of the rent and give us less.
Well, and they're increasing their project size too.
Right.
I can't believe.
Well, here's how I see it, they know that we're writing this. They are complaining about the expense on it. Then you know what, come to the table with some solutions for us. They really haven't done that, you know, they just squatted a little bit about how much.
Their bottom line is their dollar.
Well, right, but you know what? Hey, we.
They're in business to make money and.
Nobody's saying that they shouldn't, right, but, you know. Well, we beat this pretty good tonight.
We do have.
Yeah, so, right, I feel like we're nowhere. So what should we do? Are they back at your table? Tell us, I mean, they're, are they at your counter still or where are we at?
But this is all, this is all what we want.
I, I feel like it's got a lot of good flexibility into it. I think I like what, I'm in the same camp as Dean, it's, you know, in the plan union development, then let's do some give and take here, you know, the flexibility is here. The flexibility's here. We've already bent for other things, so I mean, what do we... I liked it when I read it.
So when a, when a project runs into trouble, and if that's site conditions, if it's price of the land, if it's any number of things, and all they are doing is making concessions, it's really up to the city to say, that is a precedent we can't set with all these concessions. We're the property owner, and part of those are gonna be financial concessions. And then the only thing you balance it against is, does it make a positive impact on our community? Do the taxes outweigh some of those? And that's a tough, that's a tough call.
And that's policy, too. The city is financing policy.
That becomes a real policy issue. If it were so simple that somebody comes in for the first time, reads this, and they're looking at it, and they're going, well, that's, that's better than what Plymouth required, you know, then they're gonna go through the steps. They all know generally what prices are, but in today's economy especially, we're getting, we're getting price increases on a variety of things, from countries that are producing these products, just because of the trade wars we're in. It's a fluctuation that's kinda disconcerting. If you haven't got your materials now, and you base your performer on somewhere other, and all of a sudden, all the Italian ceramic goes up fifty percent, it makes a big dent in the project, and then, then all of a sudden, you're getting vinyl floor again. So the, it just changes constantly.
That looks, still looks better.
I understand, so this is, this is the original, this is the original side where you had the drop down? And now you don't have the drop down, because they added...
Because that's where you were talking about doing something on the roof, and, and now they've taken all that.
You, you gotta, you gotta elevate some of the harnesses around the staggered walls to compensate for that, 'cause that did have part of the attraction.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that, I think, it's nicer looking. Hard, because you're looking at the side of the L.
Yeah.
Where you're not really seeing the whole entryway there.
Wasn't the original just studios and one bedrooms where this one has?
Yeah.
Two and three. One bedroom, two bedrooms.
Yeah, I think it just, it did, it had a mix of all of them.
But now they've increased the unit.
Twenty more units.
So they took away the architectural look that we liked, and added more units, and made it more difficult for us.
I think that's what it is. I feel like we got, I feel like we got the line thing going on, and I, it's not like, I don't like great... I kinda like the line thing going on, because like...
Yeah, it looks like...
It's true, and it's like...
Right, yes, yes. That's why I said, when you look at the other one, and the, the staggered, it's, it's more interesting, that looks nicer.
Have those ropes going on, like those at the top, and the black is only, you know...
What do we wanna do?
Well, I mean, I, I think, Dean, what you've written, I, I like the way it reads in that.
I do, too.
You know? Like, you have this, and you have that, so they're two separate issues, really. You have to write this, no matter what, because we need it for our, our mixed use.
You need the direction.
Yeah.
I mean, we have to tell them something.
Right.
It starts with us, and if these don't match what your expectations are, and trying to encounter what Elizabeth says, if we get this much lap siding, can't we do something else? Well, you, you can, especially when they're not meeting your standards specifically.
Dean, this is just...
And it looks a lot different.
I, I think they almost need to go up with end caps on the building.
They gotta do something, because it's looking just like a big square.
Yep.
You know, when you look at their original design, and you look at this, there, there's a big difference in what we looked at and said we liked, compared to what they're coming back with. Yes, yes.
It was, it's hard to see in both of the elevations.
Yeah, I'm not sold on...
Yeah, I, you can't bring them down, but you can bring them up. That'd be like the center feature in the main entry.
Looks like the big... Now, what do we have to do to, like, do we have to accept these?
Well, it looks like it's just discussion. Just discussion.
No, I think you're on the right...
I think you're continuing the discussion, because we didn't even talk about commercial standards. And, you know, there are, there are other components, there's assisted living, and I know you're wanting to try and at least reach conclusion about the apartments, and so, if you just said, well, yeah, that's, that's simple, that's this section M, or whatever it is, and if you can't improve on it, then you can pass that along again to the council.
Well, that's kinda...
Because the only thing that's pending right now is, is an apartment project.
Yeah, right. So we're gonna continue the discussion on that, and maybe what I'll try to do is ask for a little input on the next... About that, what do we think about that? Yeah, because, I mean, I feel like we're spinning our wheels, but I like what's here, and I'll, I'll indicate that we're pretty unanimous that we like what's here, and, you know, ask for some guidance on that, if they have any input or any direction. And then, Elizabeth has anything she wants to add, I'd happily add that, too. Just give me a call, all right?
Talk to them then, and...
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
We lost something there.
Oh, that looks like fruit stripe gum to me.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, where are we here? Number twelve, public open forum. Anybody from the public? You guys don't wanna hop up here, right? Okay. All right. Number thirteen, city administrators' report. Yep, she did that, did she? But she, she have anything else to add? Nothing else? Okay. All right. Planning commissioner report. Barb? Chris? Nothing. Jody?
I just wanted to mention about the, the bus...
Signs?
Signs.
Okay.
And we wanted to kind of inquire about the bus signs. The bus signs.
And they were, that's on, uh...
They're on twenty-three and on Broadway. And they're in the right ways, so they're, I think they're not where they are.
They do put the bus signs up.
Yeah, and I, I just wondered if they...
Those are school busing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all of a sudden, we... And we were talking about billboard signs, and all this, and all this...
Well, you hate to see people just start popping upside and wherever.
Especially with what we're going through.
Yeah.
Well, and I can see this through all the city with all these, all the sign...
On Lake Drive there.
That was pretty...
I'll ask the... Sign up, and you can see what it says on the sign. Don't take them down, we've called people on...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. There is...
How did they become that they could wrap all your own first line?
It didn't, they just, they just don't have the, the trailers, don't have, you know, the trailer.
I was just, that's my next question.
Actually wrote orders for them to move the trailers, because they had wrapped around the whole building in the fire lane, after taking all the trailers out of the fire lane, where else could they put them? Where did they come from?
Aren't they limited to a number that they gave the theory?
Yes.
Yes, they were, yeah.
And we were even generous with that number, and added more than...
And don't they own coke? Backs out, too?
They, they moved those tra, those trailers, they've seen a lot. Because they've been in coke. They, they moved those trailers a lot.
They're gonna be moving them again.
And I agree with you, I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is, obviously, that they need more land, maybe because they don't have enough vehicles for trailers. And I know, I know a little bit more about their, their new plan, and they feel that they need a lot of units, to sell a lot of units. We just don't have a lot of places to store for a minute to go. And I don't know what the answer, ultimate answer is, of them buying one property, but we don't allow their storage, if they're compliant.
That's what it is.
But they're violating the... Right now, they, yeah, they're not compliant with their, with their... And we know that, and they know that. So this is nothing new.
Maybe they wanna buy some city land and build some buildings, and have, have them stored in there.
You know, I'll put storage tables back, so I don't have much more...
Right, we don't, it's just...
And it just does not...
No.
It, it's like the billboard.
That's mine was...
They had to move all the trailers out of the fire lane, which they did.
And then they put them on the parking lot. So now they're like cordwood in the parking lot, yeah.
Because you couldn't drive around the building. Then, and even turn his truck around, because he's serving trailers.
I've heard people that go in there as customers have a hard time, yeah.
Yeah. But you would think that they would get that, right?
So would the city put them on the notice, because they got all the... I mean, if that's an exception, because they don't comply, I mean, how long do you...
Well, you're...
Yeah, we're filing it, too. I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, you know, they're everybody, you know, whether they're... Others, and, and all of them are, we try to... And then they need to...
Get rid of some trailers.
Get rid of some trailers, and they...
Well, I have a fire sale.
And I think what exacerbated the problem is they...
So it all comes to inventory, okay.
It is grown. Yes, yes.
This morning, I'm like, wow, they get a lot more? Thought they were supposed to only have ninety.
That gentleman that was here, they could only fit twenty in that fenced area, that realistically, I don't even know where he got ninety from. I think what the message was, they needed park spaces for ninety, wished they had ninety. Nobody measured for ninety, and that ninety, now they have no place to put it. I don't think, I don't think the place needs to be as helpful, where they have to have it, like I said, even if they bought properties except Albert George as a, as a use, and so it is, it is a problem for them.
For them, and for the city.
For the city.
It comes back again, and it goes back to this, is how do you, as a city, you know, I know you wanna be a good steward, I get that. It's important, you don't wanna chase them out of town, but you don't wanna...
It's, it's like bear homes.
I mean, you've got another company that totally does what they want, and has no respect for the contract, more or less, and, and here's another company, and, and as a city, it doesn't set a good precedence. And, and it's hard, I get it. It's, it's, we're not a policing city, and that stuff, and we want business, but... Looking at the place, it, it looks like Highway sixty-five used to look when you go down, it was all trailers. I mean, it's the same look. That's not what we would like, with the branding and, and everything else we're going for with a city, we don't wanna get branded like Blaine got branded with, uh...
Trailer Capital of the World.
Or billboard capitals, yeah. We, we took a nicer view of our city. And you know that, I know that. I know, it's hard.
And I have nothing to report, and I'll be at the next, attendance of the next city council meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So...
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good job. We like the screen.
Yes.